Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment, and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Councilwoman representing the 2nd District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have members of the Committee, James Torrance from the 7th District, and we also have our Vice President Sharon Green Middleton today in attendance representing the 6th District. Also in attendance, we have, it looks like I skipped a few people. From the Council President's staff, it looks like we have Preston Lewis. And from the Mayor's Office, we have, in the chambers, excuse me, Sophia Gabrin-Watt, and also Adam Abadear. Also in attendance, we have Matthew Peters, Staff to the Committee. Before we get started, I'm just going to take a moment to ask everyone to turn off or silence your cellphone. Also, if you have joined us in the Council Chamber and you would like to testify, there are signup sheets in the back of the room. Please sign in on the sheet for the resolution you would like to testify on and check the box to indicate that you wish to testify. Today, the Committee is hearing two resolutions. 22-0110R investigative hearing, Baltimore City as an abortion rights protection jurisdiction, and 21-0039R violence against women and overlooked public health crisis. We're going to start with Resolution 22-0110R for the purpose of requesting that the city's solicitor and representatives from the Baltimore City Health Department appear before the City Council to evaluate if Baltimore City is prepared for an influx of patients seeking to terminate a pregnancy, to identify current barriers to accessing abortion healthcare services, to identify disparities in the ability to access abortion healthcare specifically for the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community, and for marginalized racial and ethnic groups, to identify safety concerns abortion healthcare providers have in the present political environment, and explore how to address these concerns, and to specify how the recently passed State Abortion Care Access Act will affect abortion healthcare services in Baltimore City. For this resolution, we're going to start with brief opening remarks from the sponsor. Then we're going to hear from responding agencies and Committee members will have the opportunity to ask questions. Following that, there's going to be an opportunity for the public to provide testimony. At this time, we're going to hear from our resolution sponsor. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairwoman McCray, for scheduling this hearing in a very timely manner so that we can be prepared as a city to really just be on the forefront to help our constituency. And also want to thank Councilmembers Porter and Cohen for introducing an immediate adoption bill on this subject at a past council meeting. I really felt that we needed a deeper preparedness of this conversation. It's one of the most bitterly contested civil rights issues, as we all know, going back to the '60s. And bringing it up to date, we, as a whole, as a city, are responsible for protecting and promoting the health of individuals and communities across a wide range of issues. And this particular issue, I think that it's our responsibility as a city, particularly the Health Department, because I know you do a lot of research, and it's important that we have, you know, are tracking the numbers of abortions, the locations. Data is just so important. We want to make sure that the facilities that are working with individuals that have to make these types of decisions are licensed facilities and so on. So we really need that conversation. This is a continuing topic about access to healthcare services that affect everyone, and all families are, in some way or another, affected by this subject. It's important to understand the high stakes that are involved, how criminalized this could be, how abortions, just imagine again abortions being performed in back alleys, women in crisis situations, maybe even trying to perform these things themselves, and even increase in sudden deaths. It's important to remember that Baltimore is a welcoming city. An influx of women from other surrounding metropolitan counties, conservative states, et cetera, will be trying to get help. This can really affect our underserved Black and Brown communities as well. And you do know that our, we say it over and over again, at one statistics, one in every four women will have an abortion by age 45 in America. So we all need to stay on the forefront of this important subject immediately. And I do have a few questions once we hear from the Health Department. And, you know, I want the Health Department to understand that it's, this is something that I'm not, I don't want to put pressure on and force. It's an important subject, and we, as a council, because we deal within communities directly, we are the rubber on the road that talk to families, individuals, churches. So we are going to be in the mix of this subject with people seeking help. And I just want to make sure that we are ahead and doing the right thing. Statistics are going to be so important. It's not the same as it was back in the '60s and '70s when this subject matter took place. A lot of things have changed, and we have to be on the top of it and ready. And I am thankful that our mayor has started that process in granting funding to organizations that provide these services. But I specifically think it's important that the Health Department provides those resources to communities as well. And I'm interested, we're interested in knowing how, where, what you are doing, the role that you're playing. So again, thank you for giving me an opportunity to say a few words about this subject.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. I do want to recognize that we do have Councilwoman Felicia Porter and also Councilman Mark Conway, members of the Committee, who have joined. We're going to hear from our agency representatives, Committee members, just asking that you hold your questions until we've heard from all agencies. We're going to start with the Health Department.
Good morning. Miss Smithson? Okay, there we go. Good morning. Thank you very much. My name is Kelly Eastman with the Baltimore City Health Department, and I'm joined by Megan Shipley, who's a nurse practitioner in our Bureau of Maternal and Child Health, the Adolescent and Reproductive Health Program. So the Baltimore City Health Department, we strive to support residents to be safe and healthy. The decision about whether, when, or how to become a parent is one of the most critical an individual can make in their lives. So we believe that residents need access to comprehensive healthcare that includes counseling, birth control, abortion, prenatal care, and parenting support, and that each of those services needs to be available, affordable, and accessible so people can make choices that preserve health and well-being. So abortion care in Maryland is safe and legal at all stages of a pregnancy. Maryland has continued to expand critical access to birth control and abortion care and will always be an integral part of the full spectrum of women's healthcare. Maryland's actually one of 16 states that uses Medicaid funds to cover abortion care in circumstances. Additionally, many private health insurance plans in Maryland also cover abortion care. With the overturning of Roe v. Wade, Maryland abortion providers have anticipated an influx of out-of-state people crossing state lines to seek abortion services. And alongside expanding coverage of abortion care, Maryland also houses two of the four national late-term abortion clinics, as well as over 20 different abortion service sites. To talk a little bit about the Abortion Care Access Act, in April 2022, the Maryland General Assembly passed and overrode veto by Governor Hogan for the ACAA HB 937. So this bill expands who can perform abortions in the state. It includes nurse practitioners, nurse midwives, and physician assistants. And the bill also provides 3.5 million in financial support to train healthcare professionals in reproductive services. This bill will make the state's existing abortion care coverage under Medicaid permanent and will require private health insurance plans, with exceptions for those with religious or legal exemption, to cover abortion care without cost sharing or deductibles. With the passage of this bill in 2022, Maryland law will aim to provide equitable access to abortion coverage, whether the private, whether with private insurance or Medicaid. However, despite the vast expansion of healthcare coverage brought by Maryland legislation, as well as the Affordable Care Act, abortion still remains inaccessible to many due to potentially how high out-of-pocket costs. We know cost is a major barrier for those who are uninsured, and particularly for undocumented immigrants who are not eligible for Medicaid. And we know the effects of abortion restrictions and bans will fall hardest on people who already face significant barriers to healthcare, including people working to make ends meet, young people, LGBTQ+, people, Black, Indigenous, and other people of color. Excuse me. And abortion care and services must remain protected in Baltimore City and across the state of Maryland. Through publicly accessible reproductive health clinics, abortion must remain part of non-directive medically accurate pregnancy options counseling and must be accessible to all who need abortion services. In closing, as a Title X funded clinic, the Health Department cannot legally provide abortion services in our clinics. However, we do provide information and referral for abortion care to clients who are pregnant and desire termination. We include non-biased information about abortion in our options counseling to women who are pregnant and desire such information, in addition to information and referral to prenatal care and/or adoption services. Our abortion education materials include contact information for all local abortion providers, in addition to information on different types of abortions. And then within our agency report, which is posted online, we do list some services for people who are seeking abortion services and people seeking for financial support to access an abortion as well. So for these reasons, we urge a favorable report on Council Bill 220110R. Thank you.
Thank you. The city's Solicitor's Office.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Elena DePietra from the Baltimore City Law Department. The Law Department stands by its report. We feel that this is a matter of, you know, sensitive legal import, so we would prefer to discuss it in private with the members of the Council, whoever else is interested.
Thank you both. I'm going to open up the floor to the Committee members for questions. I'm going to go ahead and start. This is obviously going to be directed to the Health Department. Since the overturning of Roe as our lead city agency, what collaboration or what are our city agencies doing, specifically the Health Department, in preparation for direct and indirect impacts that our residents, non-residents, and the city as a whole will face? You can also come to the podium if you need to.
The Health Department, well, we are a Title X clinic, so we are not allowed to do any kind of abortion. I mean, we are always updating our access to our referral lists. Our biggest problem is funding, usually, for people that are not eligible for Medicaid. So keeping up to date on the abortion funds that are available. And there's also rules that can affect age in Maryland. There are laws that under 18 can't have access to medical abortion, but they, that's by mail. So there's, we've expanded, as a nation, you know, a lot of access during the COVID pandemic for by-mail abortion pills, and that is an option for people in Maryland. But one limitation is that it's not an option for people under 18. We also have a notification law in Maryland that says that, there's ways around it, but basically, they are supposed to have parental notification. So that has always been a barrier for people under 18. There's certain ways around it by, you know, stating if, you know, the person's going to get kicked out of their house, or they're going to, you know, somehow face some hardship, then it just has to be documented by the provider. So finding resources and kind of basically helping our patients navigate that and staying up to date. I've had a lot of patients come in thinking that suddenly abortion was illegal, and just having to clarify that, no, in Maryland, it is legal, and it is still an option, and these are the, knowing what the cost is, which can be one of the main prohibitive factors, and then how to possibly get help with those funding. Beyond that, I mean, because we don't actually provide them, I mean, we are, we work with and refer to abortion providers, but there's not a whole lot we can kind of do as, other than provide the information and help our patients navigate the landscape right now. That's kind of what we are doing at the moment.
I feel like as our lead agency, I'm going to go, I'm going to go back to the question. The question was, what have we done in preparation for direct and indirect impacts? And I feel that as our lead agency, the Health Department, I wanted to hear more about collaboration, knowing that this is coming down. Have there been conversations with other city agencies about what does this look like? Does the Health, has the Health Department met with our leading medical institutions, who we know we have many, within, and our abortion care providers as well, to come up with a plan for the city? Has that, I guess that was my question.
Yeah, I can't speak to that.
Yeah, I do, I know we are working with our providers. I can't speak to the, too many of the details on that, unfortunately, but we can certainly get that information to you. But we are hosting a, in partnership with the Maryland Department of Health and Planned Parenthood, are hosting a reproductive health roundtable, I think geared towards providers on the future of abortion care in Maryland. That's at the end of August that will be occurring. So we are having conversations and partnering with the state and providers.
So I'm trying to figure out, like, the best way to frame this. The Vice President put this resolution forward. I felt like the resolution was pretty straightforward, and what we needed, what we wanted to know as a council from the head committee, it was more so along the lines of, hey, what's the plan for Baltimore City? Not just that we're doing a reproductive, a reproductive roundtable. I'm not sure if there's some people that are missing from the Health Department as well, and I'm very happy that you all are here to add your insight. But my question, my question wasn't answered. Let me, let me skip to this. I'm going to move on to the next one. Our reproductive healthcare clinics, they provide abortion, reproductive healthcare clinics that provide abortion in general, have been targets of violence within some of these conversations that you're going to get back on, just looking to see if there is a plan to protect properties, healthcare providers themselves, along with the individuals inside, who may be seeking care. And we also know that a lot of these abortion care providers offer services that are not just related to abortion. So is there, has there been plans, any plans to discuss, like, how, as a city, we're going to be protecting those individuals who are seeking services?
Yeah, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I completely understand the question, but yeah, as the Health Department, we don't really, like, if you're talking about physically protecting people in property, I don't think that's exactly.
So, yeah, I know that would be BPD, right? But do you guys work with the agencies? Or like, is somebody taking a lead and saying, hey, this is coming, we need to sit down with BPD? Maybe we need to sit down with DOT? Maybe we need to sit down with other city agencies to figure this out? That's what I'm getting at. What's the plan?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be really good to have in this conversation, like, the actual abortion providers, since we don't actually provide abortion services, we're not allowed to because of Title X funding. We certainly wouldn't want to jeopardize our funding. So I, yeah, I just think that having abortion providers a part of this conversation would be ideal.
Does the city have any type of plan to, does the Health Department, does the city have any type of plan to prevent harassment, any type of disruption? Are they in conversation? Is the Health Department, our lead agency, in conversation with some of our providers regarding noise regulation, parking, traffic regulations, anti-nuance regulations? Are we being, are we thinking about this on the front end, more opposed to the back end? That's what I'm getting at. Like, we know things are coming. We know that Baltimore City may play a pivotal role in what's going to happen with this, with Roe being overturned. So is our Health Department being a leader, bringing these people together? Is somebody in the Health Department is bringing everybody together to say, hey, how are all of our city agencies going to play a role in this on the front end?
Yeah, so I will have to get back on that question. I know we are working closely with our providers, as we always do. I can't speak to the specifics. I don't know if you're familiar. Unfortunately, our Assistant Commissioner and Director of Adolescent Reproductive Health was not available for the hearing today, so I'll have to get back on specifics on that.
I'm going to go to Al, I'm going to go to the sponsor of our, of the resolution for her questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm, I'm just kind of sitting here in awe because the bill was really spelled out as specific as possible. We want specific Baltimore City inform, we're specific not for information about an individual. We, you have, you and I, as I mentioned earlier, we have a responsibility to protect our communities, and we need information to disseminate to our communities to be prepared. I don't know how simple that can get. What are you, because right now, the answers that you're giving, you're referencing Maryland in general. Well, Baltimore City is a jurisdiction. We are part of a county. We are also our own municipality. So we have, like, double responsibilities. We're just asking, what are you doing? What do you have in place? That's simple. And you keep saying we can't ask for specifics. I just don't understand. Are there, do you have brochures prepared that we can disseminate? Do you have a hotline number or a number that we can give to our communities? Do you have specific information on that website? First of all, you gave us a list of websites, and we have a, we have a city of neighborhoods that still don't have access to computers. So we need phone numbers, we need, and these are things that we, we have for, for, you know, other types of things. Why aren't you giving us information for this specific subject? I just don't, I don't get it. I don't understand where you're coming from. I first, first of all, Madam Chair, I would like the Health Department to give this Committee and myself, we need an up-to-date list of clinics or organizations that are the partners. We need this information. I'm, I'm just kind of at awe that you seem to be shying away from your role as the Health Department. I just don't understand. And I'm just, I'm totally upset that you come here and you're not prepared. You give us information generally that we basically already know. We need to be prepared for Baltimore City and what's about to happen. This is one of the most serious subjects in the country, in the country. And I grew up in that beginning era. It's applying that you're not talking to us, the way, giving us the information that we really wanted from you, and you had ample time to get this information. So what are you doing in the Health Department? What are you doing on this subject? That's what we want to know. You, yes, we want specifics, we want specifics.
But we don't actually provide abortions. I mean, I understand if you want that from.
I know, wait, please, excuse me, let me finish. I know you don't provide abortions, but you are, the Health Department is there to protect the citizens. You're there to protect them and protect communities and provide resources and information. Of course, we know you're not a hospital and don't provide abortions. We know that. We know that. That's why the mayor gave money to fund organizations that do these things, that work with the people. So how are you connected with them? You need, you're supposed to be monitoring what they're doing. Talk to us. Don't just give us a one-page statement, general statement of fact. We know there's a Maryland Act. What are you doing in Balt, preparing to do in Baltimore City on this subject? That's what we want to know.
In reality, the law has not changed much in terms of Baltimore. Yes, nationally, it has changed, but nothing has really changed in Baltimore. We may have more people coming in, but we're not seeing that necessarily. I mean, who you need to talk to is the abortion providers in Baltimore City. We are just not there.
Excuse me, nothing has changed as far as what?
Maryland laws, the ability of Maryland residents to seek abortion has not changed. So this is not some, it's the same information we have had. That has, nationally, yes.
There needs to be some changes to update what we're about to experience now. You need to be tracking data, you need to be tracking locations, where, you need to be setting up things to have that information for us.
I work for Title X, so that is not within the ability that I can do. I'm a nurse practitioner that works with reproductive health. I am here to tell you how we handle abortion referrals in our clinic, speaking from.
Well, it sounds very, it's, this is weak.
So let me, let me, let me cut in. I'm going to take the floor right now. The resolution is pretty clear. Kelly, I think we're missing some, I don't know if we're missing some people. This is not just about what the city can do as far as providing abortions. It's more so about what does the city's plan look like? What does the city's plan look like? And it's more than, oh, we can't, we can't provide abortions, and you need abortion care providers at this hearing to talk about this. The Health Department should be the leader, the leader for the city in making sure that people are actually convening to say what's going to happen within the future. Vice President Middleton, I'm going to move on to Councilman Torrance for questions at this time.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Vice President Middleton. My question is more so, I know because of Title X, you cannot actually provide services. My question is, how are you supporting service providers, right? And I think that is, I think this is more of like a leadership role that we expect from the Health Department. One is not only just making the referrals, but understanding that abortion providers will have an influx of persons who are not from Baltimore, who are not from the general Maryland vicinity. When those persons come, they'll be taking slots from residents that are in Maryland who would have had that access. So access is going to go down. So how are we coordinating to make sure that the women who are here in our city have access, and we provide appointments, and at least advise someone how to get appointments and get there, right? And I think that's the conversation that is missing from that portion that we have not heard. So that, I think, is, that is my request to the Chair, is that we have an understanding of how you're going to support, A, abortion providers in the city of Baltimore, but also how are we communicating with residents, the urgency of if they do need access to it? How can they navigate with your partners as well in a consistent manner, whether they have internet access or phone numbers? We need to make sure that we're able to help our neighbors, our neighbors in our communities to navigate, because as other residents and other citizens from other states are coming, they're going to take slots from our residents. And then there's going to be issues with affordability and access in terms of, like, actual cost. So I just want to make sure that we are being at the forefront and being leaders on that. With that, I yield back to the Chair.
Thank you. I just want to note that Councilman Block, member of the Committee, did join us early. We're going to move on to Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Chair. I did have a few recommendations just from looking at the Health Department website. One of the things that I think can be really, really helpful in what will answer Vice Chair Middleton. answer, um, Vice Chair Middleton, kind of overall broad project management plan, workflow and things of that nature, if we can just have more accessibility from the website. So having more accessibility to the website, having different resources within the health department website, maybe having, um, an updated list of abortion providers by district. Um, having, you know, making it more accessible, just something, that's a low-hanging fruit that can be done. Also, when we're talking about health education and outreach, you know, having that connection with the CBOs that, um, Councilman Cohen and I, we named six or seven community-based organizations within our resolution, um, within our resolution that can be used as triages and springboards to the community building and rapport from the health department. These are two low-hanging fruit that can be done. Um, and I'm just concerned that, you know, similar to what Madam Chair and Vice Chair are saying, that we are not really thinking from a forefront perspective of how, with these influx of, of individuals coming in, women and LGBTQ, um, persons coming into Baltimore City, we don't have a plan. And that's something that the health department can actually take the lead on, being that agency coordinating not only with hospital systems, but also with agencies, as mentioned, DOT, um, our, our school system, like, we can, we can actually take the lead on that. And so I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit concerned that we're not thinking about that and that wasn't present, presented today, but I'm hoping that at a future, at a future meeting, we not only have those types of specific questions and details, but also we have, um, inquiry and also input from our hospital providers, from our FQHCs, um, and also from our, um, from, from our community-based organizations that are doing this work. And I see, I see your quizzical, uh, uh, is, are, am I saying something that's not resonating? Okay. Um, so having, having that type of, um, having that type of input, I think, will be really important moving forward. Thank you so much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. Um, just want to say I agree with everything that you said. Um, Councilman Conway?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I, you know, I, I share the sentiments of all of my colleagues. I think, um, I won't beat a dead horse here. I do want to ask, um, from the department's perspective, knowing the change, um, knowing it, although it's not happening here, that it'll change policies in our bordering states, um, some immediately, um, some in the potentially near future as we have elections coming down. Um, what downstream impacts are we expecting, um, so far as folks coming here, so far as, who knows what else? What, what are we expecting? I mean, I'm sure we've done a thought exercise here, but what are we expecting?
Um, yeah, thank you. Sorry, I can't-
It's okay, I can see.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, generally, we, we, we would expect to see, um, an influx. Um, I'm not sure, Megan, if we've seen an influx in referrals, people coming in for referrals or anything yet. Um, so I'm not sure if, if that is what people are seeing yet, um, but it would be the expectation. I think West Virginia is, is the only state surrounding us that, um, does not have protections in place. Um, uh, I think it would be important to ask, you know, to talk with the abortion providers about whether they are seeing that specifically yet.
Yeah, I, I asked that question, um, I, I'm no, by, by means no expert here, but I would suggest that, um, much in the same way that we deal with any other crisis that may, may be on its way, let's say we hear a snowstorm's coming, we prepare for that snowstorm. Um, much as we know that, uh, many folks will be looking for options desperately, willing to travel, of course, even to Baltimore City, and it's being probably the most, um, transportation connected place within the state of Maryland, um, it's very possible that many folks will be coming here. Um, I also think that, um, you know, with regards to people who already naturally moved between West Virginia and Maryland and Baltimore and Virginia and so on and so forth, who knows what will happen there, um, as people migrate here, what needs they may have, potentially having new children, um, and, and what challenges that, uh, those families may face and how we can think about, one, of course, from the health department's perspective, but then even more broadly for social services, um, what we should have in mind as a result of this potential influx. And I would love to see some sort of study, some deep thinking on, um, to help us as, as well, think about what we can be doing, um, to, to help. And I think, you know, we all know this is a, a national crisis and, uh, we, we want to be helpful. Uh, I'm sure you do too. We just, we need you to help us help you. So, thank you.
Thank you for our health department. We're just going to quickly, um, let me just work out what we're going to do next. We're going to go through to some public testimony. For our health department, what we'll do is we'll come back in the near future, um, in the very near future, and we're looking to see, um, Dr. Jirasa just in here, maybe some other folks who can walk us through what the future plans look like, um, for the health department. And we're going to go ahead and move on to, um, public testimony. No one has signed up, um, but we're going to check the virtual option. Um, if you would like to testify on this matter, please use the raise hand function or signal to us in the chat, um, section. And we had a Lily Melody, if she is available, we did, excuse me, we had one person who signed up online, but if you are present at this time. Okay, so we're going to move on to the virtual option. Um, it looks like we have Lynn McCann from the Baltimore Abortion Fund. We're going to unmute you if you would like to share testimony at this time.
For having me today. My name is Lynn McCann. Um, I am the Director of Development and Communications.
And did you have any testimony?
Appreciate y'all having us in the room today and about, um, how we make Baltimore a abortion rights jurisdiction. Can y'all hear me okay? I'm sorry, I'm having a little bit of internet issues this morning.
We can, we can hear you fine on our end.
Okay, great. Um, so I'm with the Baltimore Abortion Fund. We are a Baltimore-based nonprofit. We're going to support so people can actually afford a procedure, and we also help with logistical support like transportation, childcare, meal assistance, really trying to be expansive in the types of ways that we help people, um, because we're, we know Baltimore City residents, uh, Maryland residents, and we also serve people who are increasingly being forced to travel to Maryland, to Baltimore in order to get their essential healthcare. I can-
Ms. McCann, you're, um, you're cutting in and out. What I'm going to recommend-
Before Roe was explicitly overturned, people were traveling soon.
Keep letting over through the chat that she's cutting in.
Hi there, am I still connected?
Yeah, unfortunately, you're cutting in and out. It's likely, you know, a tech issue, um, we, we just rolled this feature out. If you have any, um, written testimony that you can forward over to the committee, um, you can send it to myself or the sponsor, and we'll just make sure that it's added to the bill file so we have your information on record, but we're not able to hear, um, unfortunately, what you're saying right now. We do apologize for the inconvenience.
Okay, no problem. Um, well, if anybody would like to, I will submit written testimony and the Baltimore Abortion Fund is looking forward to working in partnership with city council and any other groups that are interested.
We, we appreciate you. We look forward to your, um, to your written testimony. We'll make sure that it's added to the record once received. We also have a Ms., um, we're going to try this again, hopefully it works for our next virtual, um, testimony option. We have Kimberly Haven. Kimberly Haven, you have been unmuted.
We are a Baltimore-based national nonprofit that advocates for increased access to quality and timely sexual and reproductive healthcare in our correctional and detention facilities and addressing the conditions of confinement where systems-involved individuals are not in complete control of their reproductive futures and freedom. And so I, suggestion or amendment that we want to offer is that we include outreach to and accessibility for those individuals who are incarcerated in our local jails and pre-trial facilities. For many individuals in our city, coming into the system is when they find out that they are in fact pregnant. And if you are in prison or detained, potentially awaiting trial on a presumption of innocence, but unable to post bail, you can't make the same decision as other women and pregnant people in our community. Individuals who are on parole, probation or home detention are still considered incarcerated, and the barriers they face to accessing abortion care are also significant. For these individuals, we know that obtaining an abortion and accessing reproductive healthcare has been spotty and sometimes nonexistent. We want to encourage that we include outreach to and collaboration with our correctional partners and our public safety officials to ensure access to abortion services and supportive Uh, Councilwoman Porter, this task force would create the space and opportunity that we've been talking about today for individuals, particularly those with lived experience, uh, providers, activists and members of institutionally and underserved communities to address the reproductive health rights, justice and barrier issues that are currently being overlooked and challenged by government at all, all levels. Our task force would also be poised to conduct policy research and make recommendations to this body on how to best improve public health outcomes related to sexual and reproductive healthcare and to facilitate these collaborations. Reproductive justice is at its core, the right to control our sexuality, our gender, our work and our reproduction, even when incarcerated, formerly incarcerated or under community and/or court supervision. As an organization, we are pleased and I personally, as a city resident, am proud that the Baltimore City Council is taking this action and setting the bar for other jurisdictions, leading the charge to ensure reproductive healthcare and-
Kimberly, um, Kimberly Haven, it looks like we're having some technical, um, issues, so I definitely, um, thank you for your patience. Um, we received most of your testimony, however, I want to extend the option of providing written testimony, if you have it as well. You can email myself, um, or the sponsor, and we'll make sure that your testimony, your written testimony is just added to the, um, official record. I don't see, um-
Thank you, appreciate it.
We don't see anyone else who signed up virtually. We don't have anyone else within the chambers. I want to thank everyone in the chambers and online for, um, for your patience regarding the technical issues and, um, Ms. Eastman.
Thank you, Chair. Chair, um, I just wanted to say one last thing. I wanted to give the phone numbers to our clinic, um, since we did just have the, the links up there. So, um, people can reach our Druid Clinic at 410-396-0185 and our Eastern Clinic at Um, I'd look forward to continued conversations and I just request that we hopefully can talk beforehand, uh, before the next one. Thank you.
So I want to, um, thank everyone for joining us this morning for this specific, um, hearing. We're actually going to recess this particular resolution, um, to sometime in the near future where we can have our, um, health commissioner and possibly maybe some other folks from the health department. I just want to ensure that we have a productive and, um, meaningful meeting where all parties are prepared. So we're going to recess this hearing, and actually before I do so, I just want to extend the opportunity to our, um, Vice President, who is the sponsor of this particular bill, to see if you have any closing, um, closing remarks.
I just want to say that this, again, this is a very important subject matter, and it's, it's not just a passionate to me and who and what I represent, it's, it's passion, this is something that's important to, particularly to all women, and this is connected to, to healthcare access. And for the health department to come here and just refer basically everything to the state just proves that you have no plan together. And not to call you out, but I'm calling you out. You have to get prepared for this. Yes, we've give, and we are watching as a council because money was provided to some organizations to, to help you. That's what they're doing. They're helping the health department. And you need to have a plan, a tracking plan of information, of locations, you need to be tracking the number, you, you get this information from the people that you provided funding to. We need that data. Yes, these are state mandated facilities, but the Baltimore City Health Department has to have some responsibility of something, and that's what we want to know, what it is. And right now, you're, as far as I'm concerned, you're just passing the buck. People are going to be coming here. It's a fact. We have people coming here already for various other things that are, that we're not getting proper services for, and this is going to add to it. So please, please have information for us that we are just, we politely are asking for. What are you doing and how are you, as a health department, going to be prepared? Thank you.
Thank you, um, Vice President Middleton for bringing this, um, important resolution before the, the Health Environment and Technology Committee, and thanks for your closing remarks. Um, I want to thank everybody for joining. Um, this particular resolution is now in recess. Again, we'll be coming back in the very near future, um, to have, to, to continue the dialogue. For the next hearing, we're going to start that, we're going to take a re, we're going to take a break. So we'll be back, I want to say about 11 o'clock, 11 a.m. for the next hearing. We are going to move on to Resolution 21-0039R, Violence Against Women and Overlooked Public Health Crisis for the Purpose of Inviting the Police Commissioner of the Baltimore Police Department, the Health Commissioner of the Baltimore City Health Department, the Baltimore City State's Attorney, the Director of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, the Sheriff for the Baltimore City Sheriff's Office and certain community-based organizations to appear before the Baltimore City Council to discuss the rise in violence against women and what strategies are being put in place to reverse this epidemic. The committee held, um, multiple hearings on this resolution, um, already on June 16th, 2021, and another hearing, a work session on December 15th, 2021. We are reconvening today to hear updates from agencies on the most recent data and their actions to address epidemic of violence against women. Committee members will have the opportunity to ask questions, and then we will invite members of the public to testify. We're going to move right into, um, agency updates. I'm going to call your agency if you have any information that you would like to share, any updates, then, um, please provide it. If you do not, then just simply state that you're, um, standing by your original report that was submitted. Um, we're going to start with the police department.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. For the record, my name is Michelle Wordsburger. I am the Director of Government Affairs for the Baltimore Police Department. I am joined today by Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown and Major Latonya Bishop. Uh, and I'm going to turn now to Lieutenant Colonel Monique Brown, who's going to give you some updated crime numbers.
Good morning, uh, Madam Chair and Council. Uh, thank you for having me today. So, um, I'll just briefly go over some numbers and I'll speak for the larger part of some of those crimes that we see that involves our females. Um, so total year-to-date, we have about 9,238 incidents that has occurred, that has involved, um, women. For homicides, um, we have about 18. Now, what I will say about the homicides, that not all women, right, that has been victims, they have some familiar, um, incidents that they're involved as well, meaning maybe because I have a boyfriend, my boyfriend has now killed my son. Um, cousins that they've had some conflict or incidents have happened, um, we have a couple of those incidents as well. So it's not just, interpartner violence is- So it's not just interpartner violence, it's also with some familiar cases as well, included in that number. Shootings, we've had probably year-to-date about 44. And I'll go to aggravated assaults, because mostly those are where most of our victims are crimes. Our victims, and those crimes that have occurred are DV-related, and we have about 1,541 of those. Now, what I will also come back to say is that out of that, we have made arrests in those incidents. Year-to-date, for the familiar cases, we have about seven arrests that we, you know, for those incidents. Arrests when it's been DV-related, we've had one, and then we also have an exception where there's been a murder-suicide this year on record. And for the aggravated assaults, we have about 525 of those, but Major Bishop will get a little deeper into those numbers if you would like. That's all DV-related.
Okay, well, we can come back to the Police Department. Thanks for sharing those numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
The Health Department?
Good morning, Kelly Eastman, Baltimore City Health Department. We stand by our previous report. Thank you.
Thank you. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood, Safety, and Engagement.
Thank you, chairperson and members of the committee, for the opportunity to present updates to you all with regard to the work that we've been doing over the past year. I think it was just a little over a year ago that we met and provided our first update to the council. Obviously, intimate partner violence requires a collaborative approach that leverages data-driven responses and inter-agency coordination along with community-based partnerships. So I'm going to spend some time talking to you all about the staffing structure that Monti has put in place in order to provide Baltimore City, specifically its women and those who identify as women, the supports that they require to maintain safety, in addition to discussing three areas around inter-agency and community-based collaboration that's happening. So with regard to staffing, Monti is currently finalizing the hiring of an Intimate Partner Violence Prevention Coordinator and a court liaison who's going to further help drive the pace and desired outcomes that we seek. Through a grant that we received from the Office of Violence Against Women, we are able to support onboarding an administrative coordinator who's going to support the efforts of the three domestic violence-related coordinations, collaboratives that I'm going to talk to you about in a moment. We also established, for the first time, a victim services lane and put in place an associate director to be responsible for the work of victim services in its entirety. Finally, we hired a deputy director for Intimate Partner Violence, who is solely responsible for that portfolio of work. Now, with regard to the three coordinated efforts that are happening right now, the Domestic Violence High-Risk Task Force had its first meeting in February of this year with funding from OVW. That funding was awarded last year in the fall. The purpose of that grant is to provide a collaborative community response that's focused on reducing domestic violence-related homicides. The members of the task force are focused on three very specific areas for the first year of the grant. Number one is to make sure that we're reviewing the lethality assessment protocol, to make sure that we're taking away key insights, performance, and opportunities related to the high-risk identification and high-risk responses. The second is to make sure that we put data measures in place for IPVstat from an accountability dashboard perspective, and I'm happy to share with you all that the first iteration of IPVstat has been drafted and is in the process of being shared with our partners at BPD and other agencies, and we're looking to finalize its first version in August. And finally, to reconvene the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. So jumping right to the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team, prior to Baltimore sunsetting the first version of it back in 2018, it was one of the oldest and most active in the state of Maryland. It reviews domestic violence fatalities and near fatalities with the goal of reducing those cases by making recommendations to agencies around systemic change, policy change, protocols, and processes. And many of the recommendations that were historically designed by that team led to better inter-agency coordination and a focus on victims because of the safety protocols that were put in place. In 2021, Baltimore City experienced 13 intimate partner-related homicides, including 10 women who were killed by their partners. In 2020, there were eight intimate partner-related homicides, including seven women, and our collective analysis of those losses of life is represented in the cases as important work of the 20-member team that is doing the work of the Domestic Violence Fatality Review Team. The last piece that I'll speak to is the Domestic Violence Coordinating Council chairperson. You're fully aware of this particular body. Thank you for your service on it. This re-establishment of the DVCC is through Mayor Scott reconvening the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council structure, and this is one of the work groups that have come out of this structure. We have two chairs that have been elected. Lieutenant Colonel Mo Brown, who sits to my left, is one of those chairs, and her co-chair is Lisa Nitsch, who is the Director of Training and Education at the House of Ruth. It's a 15-member team who is responsible for delivering systems change as it relates to intimate partner violence work. Just a couple more points here. Monti has spent a decent amount of time focusing on offender-focused prevention efforts so that we don't place the entire weight of addressing intimate partner violence on the survivor. And as such, we've invested dollars into making sure that we can change the behavior of perpetrators of domestic violence in fiscal year '23. We're going to be investing $300,000 to partner organizations who are certified in abuser-intervention programs to strategically make sure that we're able to reach more individuals who have either been identified as abusers or who demonstrate the likelihood of becoming abusers. And there's going to be more to come on that in the coming weeks with regard to the organizations that we'll be partnering with. The final thing that I'll close with, and then happy to take any questions from the committee, is that I do have team members with me today who make up our data analytics team and are responsible for building IPVstat in addition to those who are members of the Victim Services Team, to the extent that the committee wants to hear in more detail what we're doing about intimate partner violence, sexual assault, or human trafficking. Thank you.
Thank you. The Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success?
Good morning, council members. Unfortunately, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success was not able to send over any representatives today, but we will dutifully take any questions you have back and get those answers to you in writing. Adam Abad, your Mayor's Office of Government Relations.
Okay, we have questions. The Sheriff's Office?
They were invited by us, but unfortunately did not respond to our request.
Interesting, okay. State's Attorney's Office?
Good morning. I'm Michelle Lambert. I'm the Division Chief of the Special Victims Unit at the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office. The State's Attorney's Office stands by its report.
City Solicitor?
I believe they stepped out. They were here earlier, but I will reach out to them.
Are you standing by their report?
Yeah.
Okay. We are going to move straight into questions. I am going to start with -- let me get closer to the mic. I'm going to go ahead and start with BPD. I understand that you guys have a ton of data for us. We did -- let me start here. Can you give me the numbers? Let me go back through my notes. Can you go over back? Did you say 18 homicides this year for women and girls?
Incidents, so -- my apologies. Those numbers are inclusive of also those familiar cases that I was speaking about. So it's not just our ladies or women or girls. They're also about some of the, not just the interpartner violence, but also some of those cases where family members may have been necessarily, may have been the suspects, or they involve family members. Like, we have about -- So for familiar cases, like year-to-date, we've had nine of those incidents where the suspect was a cousin, the suspect was maybe the son of the female as the culprit, or the female's boyfriend may have killed the son. So it's some of those incidents that's involved there, but we've made seven arrests for those cases.
Okay, I don't want to say like it went over my head or anything.
No, no. So some of those, as we're classifying them, it may, again, like new boyfriend kills old boyfriend, just because of that nexus, right, of a female being involved, some of those, we still count them and investigate them with that context, right? The familiar cases is there, is some domestic nexus that's there, and maybe not necessarily involving the female herself to be the victim, but there are other entities that are connected to that female that, where those incidents have occurred.
How many female victims, homicide victims, do we have for 2022 so far? And not just, like, I'm not just asking for IPV. This is not just about domestic violence or intimate partner violence. This is violence against women and girls, some period.
Year-to-date, we have five cases.
Okay, what about shootings where women or girls were victims for 2022 so far?
Forty-four.
Okay, and from there, for the homicides, how many of the cases do you have information about any ties to intimate partner violence? And that would also be for the shootings as well.
So for the homicides, so far, we've made one arrest, and I spoke briefly on the exception that we've had. That was a murder-suicide in that case. So of course, that would be exceptionally curious, just because of the, both partners are now deceased. When it comes to shootings, out of those 44 cases, we've had about three of them where we have made arrests, and the rest are still actively being investigated.
For the shootings, what's the total number that you're able to, if you're able to speak on it, that you're able to tie to intimate partner violence? I know you just said three cases you made arrests, but out of the 44?
The number that we have for 2022 connected to domestic violence is five, and those are homicide numbers.
Yeah, shootings. What about the shootings?
I have no shootings.
Okay. And just so I understand, we're saying that we only had -- oh, that can't be right. Five homicide victims who were women this year? Or did I misunderstand you?
Who were domestic violence homicide victims.
Okay. So how many were victims of homicide, women or girls who were victims of homicide this year? That was my question.
The total number that I have for homicide for 2022 is 16, and for non-fatal shootings is 38. And of that, a subset of five who were domestic violence homicide victims.
Okay, that's in line for me. What do we look like in 2021, if you guys had that information? For both homicides of women and girls and also shootings, that would include all?
So for homicides, I have 21. For 2021, I have 21. But 11 of those were familiar cases, again, when we speak about how that nexus is connected to a female, but she's not necessarily the victim.
I can provide the numbers that are specific to women who are victims for 2021, Councilwoman. For 2021, total homicide victims who were women, 37. Total non-fatal shooting victims who were women, 87. And of that, a subset of 12 were domestic violence homicides in 2021, and three were domestic violence non-fatal shooting victims.
If you're able to speak on this, how many of the cases for shootings and homicides stem from retaliation in reference to some other street-level violence that occurred?
I would have to get back with you with those numbers, because it would take a little bit for us to do some digging to pull it up motive-wise, to see if we have that, because sometimes we don't always get the contacts, even if we do make arrests. Some individuals, you know, may not necessarily go into a lot of why they may have committed an act, so sometimes we don't have that, and sometimes the victim may not be as forthcoming with some of that information as well.
We'll make it a committee request. I just look forward to it. Given the number of females that were victim of a homicide or shooting this year, how many of them have been repeat violent offenders or people who are known to law enforcement because of criminal activity?
None.
So based on the work that we've done with BPD and other partners via the LAP Assessment or the Lethality Assessment Program into the last three years of LAP data, which is 2019 through 2021, we've indicated or identified that 8.4% of all of those LAP screens involved a repeat offender. And so while I don't have the disaggregated number to share with you, that is the 2019 through 2021 percentage.
I have about two more questions, and then I'm going to just open it up to the floor to see if my other committee members have any questions at this time. How many females or young girls, 17 ages, if you have this information, 17 years of age? I'm going to stop saying "if you have this information," because you can let me know. 17 years of age and younger have been the victims of homicide or shooting this year?
So when it comes to that information, what I do have is that we have had 12 juveniles that have been victims. Gender-wise, as far as females, about 18. Now, to be able to separate that, to say distinctly that it was that age group that you're looking for, I don't have it disaggregated in that way.
Okay, I'm going to submit that one.
We've got it.
Okay.
If you give us one moment, Madam Chair, we can get it. Happy to come back to that question.
Yes.
Okay, even with the, just say even with the numbers that we have, what is the plan to help reduce the occurrence of young girls becoming victims?
I think through DVCC, which I'm absolutely delighted to be the chair of, that is one intersectionality that we can address. How do we educate our young ladies when, you know, to recognize that they are in a toxicity-type of a relationship? How to safeguard themselves when we are seeing some onset of some of that violent behavior that is displayed? I think we need to get further in front, a little younger, right, because we do have our young people dating, whether we are known as parents, whether it's known to you as a parent or not, that they are having these relationships, and then we're seeing some of that occur after the fact. How do we get in front of them to kind of educate? And I think this is a good point where DVCC can make that a part of their workflow, definitely with that task group, but also how do we get connected to the educational portion? How do we connect to school police, you know, school administration to help us kind of get in front of that?
What's also worth noting here, Madam Chair, is through a grant received from the National League of Cities, Monti is actively having conversations via its Victim Services Team, its Gun Violence Prevention Team, and the Baltimore City Police Department, including the Baltimore City School Police, to pilot community violence intervention programming through schools-based programming. And more specifically, to your question, Deputy Director Lee, who is responsible for intimate partner violence within the agency in partnership with Associate Director Adams, has been talking to the Baltimore City Public School System about dating violence and how we bring that into the schools that we're going to be piloting.
And understanding, like, most crime is against people, it's likely going to be committed by somebody that they know, and I just received the response to the question about intimate partner violence, how we can target through different things that are already in the works or plans that you already have, but what about a plant? But what about a plan, what, where's, what portion of that plan would impact young women, seventeen and old? Like, young girls who are not having issues with, say, intimate partner violence? How, what else are we doing to make sure that they're not becoming victims of crime in the city?
So the reference to the school-based program was not alone specific to intimate partner violence, but will give us the opportunity to have two students in each high school grade across three schools. So two in ninth, two in tenth, eleventh, and twelfth across three schools in ways that allow us to work through conflict resolution, in ways that allow us to make sure that mediation is available so that items of disagreement don't escalate into violence to begin with around education, around what that looks like to actually have a healthy conversation instead of that escalating into violence. And so while that wouldn't just apply to women, it would, or to young women who were in school, they would become beneficiaries of that work.
When it comes to the police department's initiative to reduce the number of homicides and shootings against women, can you share with us if there's any strategic goal or what the strategic goal is for the remainder of the calendar year of 2022?
I think the best goal is that we have zero victims, right, ever. But I think the biggest part where we're looking at some of the gaps and the voids that is needed for us in the department is to get ahead of a lot of these incidents. An instance where we have had some repeat victims, right? They've been victimized more than one time. Maybe location, we're looking at that, is this a repeat location that we have responded to because of some of these incidents? And then also making sure that we're partnering with other advocacy groups. And when it comes to even our youth and juvenile, because some of those instances, our victims are very young and is normally in households when it comes to either child abuse or maybe some of the sexual assaults that we see. How do we get in front of that in educating and making sure that we're doing some follow-up? That make sure that we are connecting those families to the services and support that they may need. Not necessarily that just say, hey, you've been a victim of this type of incident, just go ahead and talk to the support, but doing some follow-up to see how those connections are being made, how those connections are continuing, because we see that that is important. Some may be even down to the weeds of some parental guidance on how to discipline their child. Because those instances become crimes because maybe they have gone just a little too far. Even when it comes to young people exploring in some sense of sex assault, right? CPS is involved with those cases with us as well. So just making sure that we're keeping those relationships and partnerships open and most certainly trying to broaden the vision that we're seeing, but making sure that we are collectively in collaborating on that one vision.
Okay, and this is a quick follow-up, then I'm going to move on to my colleagues for any questions. How are you measuring the effectiveness of those strategies that you've talked about? Specifically, are you measuring them like by police district? Or how are you measuring the strategies that you just spoke about?
We're in the process of doing just that, trying to develop a system that lets us be able to see how to measure it, all of the, all of the strategies and initiatives that we have. And I think one of the gaps that we recognize, you know, in the agency is that we don't have a great accountability measure with the databases that we already use. That really gives us a lot of that insight. So now we're building out that process with our data-driven strategies, with new databases that we're putting in place that will allow us to really be able to pull that data really quickly, real-time, and be able to see where we may need to get a little bit involved with some of those incidents as we're seeing them occur.
Okay, you probably know my favorite question that will come next. What's your timeline? What's your timeline for building out some of these systems?
So sometimes the systems take us just a little bit because of the technology piece and then the software piece, and then some of it is some processing. I know that we're in early stages of development, really trying to figure out what it is that we need. What do we want this database to do? What data that we need to be able to have access to? And we're recognizing that in some of those gaps, right? We're missing a lot of data points that we should automatically be able to get instantaneously.
If I could, Madam Chair, so as I mentioned in giving my update, IPV stat is something that's going to become available in August for us. We are already tracking just as BPD is the aggregated and disaggregated numbers associated with the impact of violence to those that identify as women in our community. With regard to measuring effectiveness, yes, we currently are tracking, in partnership with BPD, obviously, DV crimes year-to-date per district, DV disputes per district, so that we can get ahead of those before they become lethal. And as a result, able to track lethality year-to-date per district so that we can hold, or BPD, rather, can hold command staff accountable for making sure that any trainings that need to be put in place, any protocols, procedures that need to be put in place to keep women safe in our communities are there. I'm happy to share the outcomes, the outputs, the efficiency metrics that we are looking to track with you all after the hearing.
And we do try to do with PIO do a lot of messaging around, you know, safeguarding with some of the other crimes that we've seen as well, that's not interpartner violence or DV-related.
Madam Chair, if I could add just one other point, we've come before the council. Well, let me just say, our lack of technology is legendary in a really, really bad way. We have completed the first phase of, excuse me, implementing a brand-new records management system, which is where data gets pulled. Phase two is integrating a new case management system, which will, because right now, I think we have Lexus. Is that the one that's really bad that everyone laughs at? Lotus Notes, excuse me, which is like thirty years old and ridiculous on so many levels. So the next phase is implementing and integrating a new case management system, which will allow us new ways to track different types of elements of crime, which will be really important.
And Madam Chair, I have the answer to your question about under seventeen. And I have numbers going back to 2019. How far would you like for me to go back?
I want to go to 2020, 2021, and also.
Twenty twenty-two to date?
Yep.
Twenty twenty, for those who identify as women or girls under the age of seventeen, five homicides, one non-fatal shooting. For 2021, six homicides, seven non-fatal shootings. And year-to-date in 2022, two homicides, four non-fatal shootings.
Okay, we're going to move to Councilman Conway.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question is kind of a basic one, kind of sorting through all the data we've gone back and forth on. Because I think we, the chair asked a couple of different questions, and I actually intend to focus primarily on domestic violence. So can you guys explain to me what our current trend is today on domestic violence? Is it getting better or worse from what we've seen in the last two years, 2020 and 2021? Where are we trending? Can you speak into the mic?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm Major Latonya Bishop, the commander for the Family Crimes Unit within the Baltimore Police Department. So my unit is responsible for handing, handling domestic cases that are at a felony level, meaning that a firearm may have been discharged or aggravated assault. We don't usually handle common assaults or lower offenses. Those are handled by the district levels. And just looking at the first responder cases for 2021, we have two hundred and eighty-three cases. Out of that two hundred and eighty-three cases, ninety-two of those cases involved female victims. If you look at 2022, we handle one hundred and fifty-nine cases, and ninety-five victims, ninety-five, ninety-five of the victims were female victims. So if you look at last year cases, we were at a total of ninety-two. This year, and we're only in half of the year, we are at ninety-five victims of domestic violence. So it would appear that going further into the last six months of the year, that there will probably be an increase of those crimes against females in reference to the domestic violence cases. Overall, citywide, the numbers were for 2021, where that includes the common assaults, it appears that the agency had sixty-five, six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven cases. And in 2022 so far, we have three thousand five hundred and sixty-eight. So it looks like overall, there is going to be a decrease in the cases, but it is a little increase with the more felony cases.
Got it. That's very helpful. Thank you. I'm curious, do we have any insight yet on what those increases may be attributed to? I think, so we've been discussing this issue between this hearing and I think also one in my committee. And we talked about a number of things. When we both introduced the respective resolutions, it was in the beginning of the pandemic, or not in the beginning of pandemic, but in the middle of the pandemic, where I think tensions were high as people were locked in their homes. And we saw some pressure, I guess, around DV as a result. Knowing now that we still see that number trending upward, do we have any insight on what or why that may be? I have some thoughts, but I'll leave that question to you.
So at my unit, we can't quite put a finger on what's causing the increase, but we kind of took a step back to look to see what we were doing and what we could do to try to figure out what was causing the issues. And I realized that with domestic violence, we have constantly always just focused on the victim. So now we have moved towards focusing on the suspects. Because more than a victim, these suspects are a lot of times repeat offenders with different, different female victims. So I was working with Wendy, we were talking about it in MONC, on what we can try to do to try to get counseling or try to get some type of court process where we can try to have the repeat offenders to get counseling because they're the ones that's actually causing the increase in the numbers because they're actually abusing several women when it comes to domestic violence. And as far as the BPD, the agency has started what we call a CID stat. It's similar to what you see in CAMstat, where during that time, we have all the detectives in front of the lieutenant colonel and the colonel, and we have like a case review on all of the DV cases. And what we try to do is, a lot of times when you have a DV case, you'll have the victim and of course, you have the suspect. And the suspect is known, and we know who the suspect is. But we failed when we didn't make an attempt to interrogate the suspect. Just because a witness tells you what's happened, that's because the victim tells you what happened. Sometimes it's important to get that information from the suspect in case the victim doesn't show up, if the witness doesn't show up. So we're finding out and interrogating the suspects. Sometimes we're getting confessions and we're getting more information to proceed with the cases. So that has been helping us in the progression of trying to close cases with the suspects. Another thing that we decided to do to help with the DV cases is that detectives were not listening to jail calls. So say if you have a suspect that's in jail for a DV case, and he wants a lawyer, he doesn't want to talk to us. So we now listen to their jail calls if they go over to jail because a lot of times they'll make that phone call as soon as they get in and tell their siblings or their mom that I'm in jail, she said this, I did this. So that's, we're getting information that way to try to solve some of the cases as well.
That's great. And I think it hits on some of the things that I think we talked about earlier and specifically around the counseling of, you know, known perpetrators. And you actually began to hit on one of my other questions around violent repeat offenders and if we had coordinated efforts to focus on those folks, knowing that they can go from relationship to relationship to relationship and abuse each one of those women. So I'm happy to see or hear that we're having progress there. And yeah, that's really helpful. Thank you. The other question I had was, can, Director Jackson, can you provide us an update on where we are with intimate partner violence stat?
We are in the process of finalizing the draft of the IPV stat bundle or dashboard to share with BPD and other partners for their feedback so that we are able to deliver its first iteration in August.
Okay, and then to that effect, I think a couple of things that I thought were, or could be really helpful and may be helpful for intimate partner violence stat whenever we do get that going in August, was beginning to understand the process once someone has called 911 with a DV complaint. And one of the key factors along that process is protective orders and making sure that BPD is serving those protective orders and doing so expeditiously, but then also our Sheriff's Department. So I don't, do we have any of that information here on protective orders served? And the timing of which we're doing that?
So sir, if I may, we can get those numbers back to you. But what happens is, once protective orders are issued, interim orders, any of that, they are automatically called from, whether it's from DV court, from any other courts, they automatically call, we go pick them up. We have an officer go pick them up immediately once they're served, I mean, issued. Once they're issued, they go back to the district, and the district automatically begins the service until we wind up locating that individual. Because most of them, of course, we know have time restraints deadlines that they expire. So the goal is always to at least make attempts for each shift, right, around the clock, that we are making contact, one, with the victim to ensure the victim is still safe, have not had any more contact, or there has not been any other incidents. But secondly, to make sure that we are most certainly serving them as quickly as we can.
Yeah, that would be really helpful to have, I think. There are a number of things that we can do.
I'm sorry, sir, if I could, we are absolutely tracking those statistics in our version of IPV stat. Would it be helpful for me to go through what we're looking to track?
Yes, please. Thank you.
The LAP assessments for all of our districts, including a percentage of laps that are more than three days late per district, lethality report by district, lethality assessment completion, with a breakdown of whether or not we are seeing repeat victims, same-sex partners, high or extreme danger, repeat offenders, high and extreme danger assessments being completed, when the sheriff's office sees as a weapon, when we are serving out-of-jurisdiction items, when we're serving peace orders. When, so all of those things were being tracked. And then DV crimes year-to-date per district, DV disputes year-to-date per district, and then lethality year-to-date per district is going to be in the first iteration of DV stat. And I would offer that there are some questions that the members have asked today that are activating some additional ideas for the team around what we would include.
That's great. One thing I think would also be helpful for you guys to track would be DV case dispositions. It sounds like we already pay attention to these things, but tracking them month by month tells us a little bit about what some of the hang-ups may be. For instance, if a victim may not want to testify, and it seems like we've identified that we need to also interview our perpetrator that has helped us to have better dispositions down the line. But that's something we should also be thinking about if we're not thinking about it already.
Yes, sir. To the extent that we can, happy to add that information. I'm not a hundred percent certain, but given that case dispositions are often tracked by the state's attorney's office and by other agencies that don't necessarily fall under the purview of the mayor, we will try our best to make sure that we include that information in the reports.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilman Balak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mostly comments, as I had a number of questions that our colleagues already asked. Most of them, you already answered them. I'll first say that I am encouraged by the coordinated effort. It seems like there really is like a seamless operation going on, so I appreciate that. There are a couple of things I did want to also emphasize too. So you mentioned both. So you mentioned both the prevention and then the outcomes aside. So you talked about dealing with victim services, also dealing with perpetrators. So I'm curious in terms of any successes in terms of behavior change for offenders, for perpetrators. And then on the other side, how you're also identifying those that are high risk. You mentioned those high-risk identifiers. So if you could talk about, again, any successes on the offender perpetrator side and then also if you could talk about how you're identifying folks that are high risk. And that's mostly for Director Jackson, but also Lieutenant Colonel Brown as well.
No, we're just starting to do that. I think with Wendy, we haven't started.
So sir, it sounds like we haven't gotten through the work associated with the completion of the identification of high or extreme danger risks, that that is the work that we're doing right now as we step through the lap assessment. We are targeting completion of the lap assessment for August 30th. But I have absolutely documented that one of the things that we want to be tracking are impacts and outcomes associated with behavior change that we see for those who are offenders or potential offenders.
Thank you.
And just to add, just in preparation to start working with deciding on how we're going to identify high risk, initially, we weren't keeping track of the repeat offenders. BPD is now keeping track of repeat offenders in reference to domestic violence cases.
Thank you.
We're going to move to Councilman Torrance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you to you and Councilman Conway for asking a lot of questions that I had. So I'm going to ask for a request. With all the dashboards that we create in city government as a councilperson, I would like access to these dashboards. So I just want to reiterate to the administration that we would like to have access to this. We had this on the prior mayor administrations when we had these dashboards. And I would like that to be a relationship that we reestablish because as an oversight bore, as an oversight portion of our jobs, I think that's more important because we can get that real-time data and we're not just one-offs from each council member asking.
Your point is well taken, sir. It is also why the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council has one of its work groups being a public safety accountability dashboard that will be made public. To the extent that we are able to share our stat data publicly, we will. There are some pieces in that information that could be seethes protected and obviously wouldn't be sharing that. But we have absolutely no problem with publicly sharing the finalized dashboards when they're done.
Appreciate you. And then as an added data point you should add to your dashboard if you do not have it, I have off the top of my head around four individuals in my district that I know of because of my relationship with my majors who are repeat offenders that often require police resources and calls for service often. So I would like to see how many calls for service are we having for repeat offenders so that we can understand the actual cost that they're having on our apparatus in terms of service calls.
Okay, I'm going to move quickly to the other side of the room, give you guys a brief break. I think we can all say, the committee members in here, every agency representative in here, that we want to ensure that parties who have been accused and or found guilty of IPV never reoffend, nor do they retaliate against the victim. So I just wanted to know, or can you walk me through how the state's attorney's office does maybe risk assessments prior to, say, asking a judge if someone is held with bail, held without bail, or sent home on home detention? What does it look like? What do those steps look like for risk assessments?
The original recommendation for bail is made within hours of when the defendant is arrested. So that recommendation is based on the allegations and a review of the defendant's criminal history with respect to domestic violence and also any other crimes. In addition, the judge will hear from pretrial services in the defense. At that time, a risk assessment has not been done by the state's attorney's office because, again, the original bail is being set within often a few hours of when the incident occurred. Sometimes on the weekend, we have not had contact with the victim, the police department has. However, at that point, the original bail is set. If the defendant, once we receive the case in the state's attorney's office, the special victims unit, the, we have victim advocates who reach out to the victims and go through lethality assessment, also assess whether they need any help with respect to resources, counseling, relocation. And should the defendant ask for their bail to be reviewed at that point? So the original bail was set and now we're further into the case, whether it's weeks, days, months. All of the information that was gathered upon speaking to the victim is input into our database and the prosecutor who is handling that bail review would convey that information to the court. We also have a duty to convey to the court the victim's wishes with respect to the case overall and whether they want the defendant to stay away from them, have no unlawful contact. So risk assessment, lethality assessment is something that is done by the state's attorney's office. But I just want to remind the council of the original timeline of when bail is reviewed and the fact that the state's attorney's office is just getting the case and has not had an opportunity to speak to the victim ourselves at that point.
And just for the record, I know your name, but just for the record, can you state your name and also the agency that you're with? It's okay.
My name's Michelle Lambert. I'm the division chief of the special victims unit at the office of the state's attorney for Baltimore City.
Thank you, Chief Lambert, and thanks for answering my question.
Absolutely.
I'm going to get back to our police department. And I want to speak specifically about robberies and carjackings at this time. So at the last quarterly crime stats meeting, obviously that wouldn't be within this committee, that would be within our public safety committee, the police department presented information showing the following data. There was 12% decrease in street robberies, a 13% increase in residential robberies, and a 45% increase in carjackings. So given those numbers, can you talk to us about which category you're seeing more women victimized in between street robberies, residential robberies, and carjackings?
What I would say is that we're probably seeing increase, probably together would be carjacking and street robberies. And I say that because of, you know, I think that we've been on record before just to state that how street robberies occur because, you know, now technology, you know, causes those individuals who are offending to have to have some physical contact because of the way that the key fobs are for the vehicles. So in some instances, what's happening is they're robbing our victims for the key fob in turn to be able to take the vehicle. So those would be the two increases that we've seen. And then even in recent patterns that we've had that we are investigating and have had some success with some arrests that also is connected to some of those incidents with Baltimore County and Anarundale County, some of those suspects is the carjackings.
What's the profile of the average female robbery and carjacking victim that is being targeted across the city?
So I'm not sure if I have that broken down, you know, whether, in that profile. That's something I can get back to you. But I know that some of it too, I don't want to mistake it with some of the larceny increases that we have seen with the Cash App theft thing because those aren't necessarily robberies, they're larcenies, right? So when it comes to some of that profile, I will have to get back to you to be able to have those numbers accurate to break down for you.
Okay, I'll submit that as a committee request. Are we seeing any patterns across the city where females are being robbed or carjacked in certain neighborhoods or at a particular time of day across the city? I know that it's pretty high in the Northeast District, which I'm one of many council members within the Northeast District. But what patterns are we seeing right now?
So right now, we do, we have about two patterns that we have seen an increase in, that we have, we're investigating. Some involve some of our juveniles. We have made a few arrests in relation to that that we're still trying to backtrack to see if there are any other incidents that occurred that we're connecting to those patterns. And then we had another one that was involving U-Haul where we were able to also assist Baltimore County in making an arrest. So what we're hoping is that in those two patterns, we will see some decrease just because those patterns hit us pretty hard over the last two to three weeks and they were ramping up just a little bit. But we were able to, of course, quickly deploy to them and, like I said, make some arrests. Hopefully, we get more arrests out of that as we continue to make some connectivity to incident and also to those suspects that we've already arrested to see what more we can get. And those districts, they were, I can't just say just to the Northeast. I can't just say like one district specific, but Northeast most certainly, they were very active. But they were also across our borders on Baltimore County and also with Anarundale County. And then when it comes to the carjackings, one of the things that we are doing, and I'm a part of this task force as well, is working with our federal partners for these type of incidents because we have had such an increase of carjackings, which I think nationally, many of us have seen it. But we have set up a task force where we have dedicated members with, that's connected with FBI, also with Baltimore County, where we're looking to clearly investigate those cases collectively, but also where those federal partners are looking to take those and adopt those cases for us for federal prosecution as well.
This question may be like a tie-in with Monty as well, but how, say if something happens within an area, we have, and I'm just going to be neighborhood-specific, say if something's on Frankfurt and Sinclair and we know that there's a major incident, a major homicide or something that happens there, what is the response of, how does Monty or our district commanders like collaborate or get information out after they go to a scene and say, maybe there's a lighting challenge in that area? Maybe there's some dumping and some other things that are taking place within that area? How would a district commanders get in that information to maybe Monty? And Monty, maybe what, how are you guys responding to these areas, these areas to look at the quality of life issues that may contribute to some of this stuff? Because when I think about carjacking, sometimes I'm going to say, what does the lighting look like? If I'm thinking about somebody, I don't know what you guys do with foot chases now or anything like that. Maybe somebody's throwing something into some illegal dumping. But all of those contribute to crime overall. So how do you, how do we assess or work together once we identify some of those things that are taking place around an area where a major crime has been committed?
So you know, this is one of my passions as well, Madam Chair. One of the things that we do as commanders, one, you know, when an incident occurs, and not just as a commander, right, the expectation is from our very first response of patrol, when they get to an incident, to make some of those assessments. And most certainly now that I'm on the other side with investigations, that is also an expectation of our detectives as well. Have we identified or seen anything that could have been a contributory to that incident? As you're saying, lighting, is it some of our businesses that may be operating not necessarily in the best context or best way? And it is, are there other things that are contributing factors that we see? So normally, once those assessments come, right, the goal is to implore and deploy the neighborhood coordination offices. So those offices go out and do a deeper dive assessment of what they see environmentally based that is those contributing factors. Then what we do is submit 311 requests. Through those 311 requests, you know, it could be the dumping, it could be the lighting, it could also be some of the facade for that business. Maybe that business has, we do security assessments as well. Maybe their windows are covered so we can't see inside when we are responding. One, to safeguard us on both sides. Something could be occurring, something could be amiss. All of those things come into play. And then normally what we do through the NCOs, because those assessments are a little deeper, have those relationships that connect us to the other agencies in the city. We do have two pilots, that's our neighborhood policing plans. They're not widespread over the city yet, we're just not ready to scale up because we're still learning as we're going. But those are where we're really granular and really trying to address those systemic environmental issues that we know plague some of our communities that just have not been serviced in the way that we need to. But also build capacity with community as well. So that is like one of the biggest things. But the NCOs aren't just there for the assessment portion, they're also there to do some outreach, maybe as metro crime stoppers, you know, to say, hey, let's garner some tips to see what happened. But also to see what else the community may be saying at that moment what is needed. Because community is most certainly our best eyes and ears to how we deploy and most certainly provide services at that time.
How are the, how are the NCOs working with, say that 311 is submitted, two weeks later, that light is still out, two weeks later, that corner store is still dirty? How, what happens because of 311? We deal with this all the time. Just submit a 311, it's not going to do it. Are they escalating this? Do they have relationships with, say, DOT, with DHCD? Are they speaking regularly with these agencies about some of the issues that are contributing? And maybe bringing crime to a certain area, allowing crime to continue in a certain area?
So part of the process certainly is follow-up because we know that somewhere along the line, we have gap. And not just the follow-up for the request to make sure that it has been completed, but most certainly to close that loop, follow-up back to community to let them know that, hey, listen, we're still working on it. We have made those connections, we have, you know, reached out to see what's the timeline based like and things like that. We most certainly use our relationships and partnerships with each of those agencies not to say that we're trying to springboard across or, you know, or try to push ourselves to the top of some of those requests because we know community is making requests as well. But some of it is to use us as that bridge, you know, for those concerns that community has had and that we also have the same because public safety is compromised due to some of these things. But also, most of the time, if the NCOs isn't getting some of that response, then it comes up to command, right, to say, hey, listen, let's forward over to our peers as NO City agencies that can get that done for us and then just continue it up with that loop and follow-up. And I know that some of those processes, if Director Jackson wants to speak about, I know that we've built with Monty a lot of those partnership relationships that really allows us to, like I said, with the neighborhood policing plans, that really allows us to have that connectivity that we have a better, a different and a better response to community when we see those issues.
Director Jackson, can you talk about how you guys work in collaboration with agencies to make sure that the city is, not just when we're calling somebody out for a walk, not just when our community organizations are calling people out for a walk, that we're proactively, how is your office making sure that people are proactively assessing? And that's just city agencies where we're having issues or where BPD is having severe crime challenges that they're trying to work through?
Happy to answer that question. I think it's also worth sharing with the committee that BPD has a 311 tracking dashboard of their own. And so when we see that officers are inputting in-service requests for specific areas, either proactively by NCOs or reactively, if you will, by detectives, they're tracking the turnaround time associated with that work being done in conjunction with Monty, DPW, DOT, BSIT, who owns the 311 system, Parks and Recs, and the HCD. I wanted to make sure I didn't, did I get all of them? Yeah. So there are seven agencies, specifically the two public safety agencies and what we would consider the infrastructure agencies around the city that are responsible for routine maintenance to ensure that contributory factors to crime are alleviated quickly. I was actually just sending a message to get an update on how frequently or what the turnaround time is that we are seeing those items get closed out. In the meeting that we had, there it is. The average closure rate as a result of our BPD partners entering in this sort of information is six days cross-agency.
And Madam Chair, if I may just add, CleanStat is another way where we're also doing some assessment that I do know, you know, through that process, some accountability measures are put in in reference to those 311 requests, not just from us, but for community as well. And even from that, they put out a shooting environmental report where those agencies focus a lot where we have had some incidents to make sure that they are going in, one, looking at all the service requests that has been entered, to ensure that those service requests have been completed, not closed out, but completed. And if not, giving some follow-up and some more context into when we can expect those things to be done.
Director Jackson, I guess another portion of my conversation is, does Monty respond out? Do you guys have a team that responds out? Or is there like some agency-wide team that responds out to some of these incidents that are? responds out to some of these incidents that are, incidents that are current within certain neighborhoods? And?
Yes, ma'am. I would offer that while Monty doesn't obviously have an operational staff like DPW or DOT or DHCD with regard to deployment, if you will, when events like this happen, because of the work that we have been charged with building in the direct service provision that we're responsible for coordinating, Monty as a staff does deploy. So the 30-some of us will deploy into communities depending on what's happening. It's also worth mentioning that the pilot of the Coordinated Neighborhood Stabilization Response is one of the key ways that Monty is currently working, not just with the other six agencies that I mentioned before, but also with the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, with the Health Department, with the Fire Department, to make sure that when we have events that are traumatic in nature around Baltimore City because of violence or major law enforcement takedowns that could ultimately result in power vacuums that create more violence that we are undertaking right now. We have been walking slowly through two of those deployments over the past few months, one in response to the incident on Rose Street in the Eastern District where we had 60-plus shell casings and a mass shooting. I think that many folks in our community were unaware of the fact that earlier in that day, we also had an African-American man just a half a block away come out and commit suicide, and so obviously traumatizing that community even more. And then what we considered a proactive response in Howard Park because we're really looking to establish what will become a mobilized vehicle that's being outfitted right now in October as a beacon of hope and resources and meeting folks where they are when these sorts of events happen. While there has been some press play associated with the success of this pilot to date, I would remind Baltimoreans that the whole purpose of a pilot is to build it until you get it right, and we've only done two so far. Our intention is to make sure that we are on the ground for 45 contiguous days using not just city resources, but community resources and business resources based on 211, 311, and 911 data that we collect for a given neighborhood.
Thank you. The Mayor's Office of Children and Families success, they're not here right now. But I guess my, what I need a question for, Mr. Abbott, or what I need an answer for is how are they engaging? What role do they play? Are they a part of a plan regarding some of the young men and men that they work with in decreasing violence against women and girls? What is their role in it? Another question that I had was how is the Office of Male Engagement being used to respond out? People call it boots on the ground. So to respond out in person to where some of these incidents are occurring, is there a specific number? If they do respond out, how many times did they respond out this year? It's something that I want to know specifically from that agency, just knowing that they're not represented today. Before I ask my last question, I just want to see if any of my colleagues have any additional questions. Okay. I have one last question. Just want to know what's the police department's clearance rate for rapes and sexual assault cases for 2022 so far?
Can you ask the question again? I'm sorry.
Sure. What is the police department's clearing, clearance, excuse me, clearance rate for rapes and sexual assault cases?
For 2021, wait a minute, because there may be just for the information pulled out just for female cases. One second. So the current clearance rate for the sex offense unit is going to be 21% and the national average is 34%. You want 2021s as well?
Yes.
In 2021, the clearance rate was 19%.
Okay. I want to thank, actually, we got to check in and see if we have any public testimony. I don't believe that anyone has signed up, but we're going to check virtually. If anyone is present virtually and they wish to testify, please raise your hand or place a message within the chat box, and we're just going to give about 30 seconds to see if there's anyone on the line. Okay, we do have one caller that called in. No hands raised. For the caller, we're going to unmute you if you do not wish to provide testimony. Just let us know that you declined to provide it. Thank you. Okay, and that caller is gone. That's going to come.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, but we do have the numbers of the average age of women who were carjacking victims, if you'd like that. I'd rather not have takeaways. For 20, for 2020, the average age 41. For 2021, the average age 36. And to date for 2022, the average age 39. And to the extent that you need a neighborhood breakdown per year, we're happy to provide that after the fact.
Yeah, if you could furnish that to the committee, was there anything else within that profile, like outside of age, that you would be able to provide?
We're happy to provide any other demographic information or profile information that you require.
I will get you a specific request, Director. Thank you so much. I want to thank everybody for joining us this morning. The committee will schedule additional meetings on this resolution in the future to get periodic updates from our agencies and continue this important discussion. The hearing is now in recess. Again, thanks, everyone, for joining.